Okay, great, I'm gonna invite them. Um, hello Mark and Grace, do you hear us?
Hi, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and I'm still waiting for two more people. Uh, but everyone, this is uh Mark Dealer from Community Board Two. And I appreciate uh your time, thank you for joining us, Mark. And also Grace Roman from Washington Square Park Conservancy. Um, I'm happy to have you all, thank you very much, and I see Max coming into the meeting. Perfect. Uh, hello Mark, uh, do you hear me? Oh, sorry, Max.
Yeah, I can hear you, can y'all hear me?
Yes, I do, thank you very much. Um, so everyone, this is Max Dut from uh City Council District One, and he is a Legislative Director. And thank you for your time, Max, thank you very much.
Of course, yes, and I can introduce myself a little bit. Yes, I'm Max, yes, I've been in the council members' office uh since the beginning, mostly doing constituent services. And then previously, our Legislative Director, who I know some of you met with last year, Ian Wang, he left the office a few weeks ago, so I've just yeah kind of taken over that role, so I'm still kind of did the legislative role and still kind of, you know, figure, you know, learning ropes and everything, but you know, you know, happy to hear from you all and kind of just hear you for saying, yeah, figure out how we can work together to, you know, figure out the, the issue.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And lastly, we just welcomed uh Trevor Sumner from Washington Square Association. Uh Trevor, do you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Um, my lunch ran a little long, so I'm a little, I'm out for the next ten minutes, but uh we'll be situated in a quieter place and I'm listening.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Alright, then we are gonna start. Um, thank you everyone for being here, I know um your time is precious and I really appreciate that uh taking your time for this meeting. And uh just letting you know that this meeting is recorded and later on, that will be most likely shared on different platforms, so just to keep in mind that. And also, uh, since there are a lot of attendees today, um when you're not speaking, uh, please mute yourself, I will try to uh mute people who are not speaking as well, but um to increase the audio quality, that'll be very helpful. And I'm gonna just talk about a general agenda for today, uh, so uh at first, I'm gonna explain the general situation for the street performers in Washington Square Park, and then after that, I pass it to Eric um uh who's gonna explain art vendor situation in Washington Square Park. And after that, um, I'm gonna play a recording uh from the last meeting we had uh last summer, uh, we had that meeting was more focused on street performers rather than the artists in general. Um, but there's one resident whose apartment is literally facing Washington Square Park and we're gonna hear her voice, and then after that, we're gonna have another resident, uh Darren in this meeting. And we're gonna show him. And after that, uh, we pass to Madeline, uh, who was also in the meeting last year. And I pass it to Lee, uh, he is also a performer musician and he's in this meeting. And I pass it to Peter after that and from the perspective of the art vendor, and he does poetry and candle in the park. And I pass it to Zach, uh, he does uh portrait drawing. And then uh I pass it to Max from City Council and after hearing the residence voice and performer's voice and art vendor's voice, I wanna hear from uh the City Council's perspective, and then after that, I'm gonna pass to Washington Square Association Trevor and the Conservancy Grace and the Community Board Two, Mark Dealer. Uh, so we're gonna hear from all those organizations and we wanna know how you guys can help to solve this issue and I'm pretty sure that at the end of the meeting, we're gonna have Q and A, open discussion. I do think that we have enough time for that. And each speaker has five minutes, and I'm gonna tell you that like when it comes to like four minutes, I'm gonna tell you that it's been four minutes, so um please try to wrap in one minute when you hear the four minutes uh notification. Is everything clear so far? Thank you very much. Great. So I'm gonna start uh with some uh situation over the street performers in Washington Square Park. Let's see. So, many of you already know the general issue, but like I'm gonna recap so that we're on the same page. So what recently, I got a ticket for this little speaker uh at three thirteen P M, if I remember correctly. And that is always below eighty decibels at all times. Um, I searched on speakers, um, you know, the website, the company and everything, and I think before that, like it happened on Ju- July twentieth and until that July twentieth this year, like that enforcement wasn't happening against my performance for more than one year. Um, especially after I uh spread the awareness about how my image was used for the bus advertisement in New York City. Uh, and I didn't get any payment for that, right? And so they used my image for free and then at the very same time in the summer season twenty twenty one, they were cracking down my performance for the same reason, for the same speaker. And after we raised our voice, enforcement stopped because the last summer we had a council meeting like this with smaller number of people, but um the previous person was Ian Wan, uh, who was the Legislative Director of the City Council District One, and he showed us the uh uh his understanding that um he's gonna tell six precinct uh police officers not to over-enforce the rules against street performers. And I think it worked, and then indeed, after that, about like one year and some months, I wasn't cracked down for uh a while, until I got a ticket on July twentieth. So that is why uh we did the protest on Sunday and Eric organized that protest. And that really helped to raise the awareness about the situation of the street performers and artists facing in Washington Square Park. Um, I'm gonna play some recording from last summer's meeting, it's like a minute and a half, so that's not gonna be too long. So let me pull that up first. Okay, I hope everyone sees this.
So about uh street performers in mainly in Washington Square Park and New York City who are harassed by either N Y P D or Park Rangers because of the sound amplifiers in many places. I understand if you know it's super loud until like uh midnight, one A M, two A M, but like it happens like anytime, like under the daylight two, two P M, three P M, doesn't matter. That is not fair for artists performing on the street in New York City, especially when New York City takes advantage of um street artists a lot. This is uh the project from last summer, this was called No Stopping New York and it caused recovery for all. This project was uh New York City Mayor's Office nonprofit advertisement after the lockdown time from COVID and showing city recovering from the, the severe COVID time. Uh, my photo was used like this, and this is myself performing in Washington Square Park. This image was all over the bathtub walls and kiosk walls and like just any places to see those images. Since this is nonprofit project, I didn't receive any money for it, I did agree with it, so I'm not saying that, oh, I wanted money, I really don't care about money, I'm just saying that this is how city take advantage of our art and they don't pay anything to me and still they harass me even after this project.
Okay, I'm gonna stop here. Um, so that's the general issue we've been having. So for now, I stop here and I pass it to Eric to uh articulate more for the art vendor situation, so.
Thank you, Konami. Uh, my name is Eric Cook, I'm an artist, an activist, and an educator. I've been uh showing and sharing my work in Washington Square Park since twenty sixteen at the very same spot where I happen to be sitting right now with my headphones on. Uh, I'm currently uh granted the privilege of being spokesman for the ongoing Artist Action in Washington Square Park. Uh, and that's the capacity I'm speaking at today. We held an action on Sunday, attended by about three hundred artists and neighbors to stand against the harassment and intimidation and illegal abuse that artists have endured at the hands of the N Y P D, particularly since July fifteenth of this year. We will engage in regular public action until this level of over-enforcement debates. Right now, we're looking at weekly actions, Wednesday at six, we're doing six minutes at six o'clock, so come on by. The majority of us feel, and I think I'm fairly uh correct in saying, the majority of us feel that the, feel fairly certain that the city, the Washington Square Park Conservancy and the Washington Square Park Association want to eliminate independent artists from Washington Square Park. I hope that is not the case. But I do need to be convinced, considering the damage that has been inflicted in the last three weeks. I'm here to support Konami's effort as well as find allies in our struggle to defend our First Amendment rights in Washington Square Park. I'm happy to either talk about my personal experiences in the park or uh the uh current project running actions uh that we're doing in the square, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Great. So, yeah, so that's the, the voice from Eric. And Joe, I see uh you raised your hand, I think, um I think you're gonna have a time to speak later on, so if you could hold until that, um, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much. Great. And so our request, one of them is stopping over fans enforcement. And specifically for the performers like myself or musicians in the park uh, we've been suggesting uh the changing the park rules or more like adjusting the park rules, because the current park rule technically says no sound amplification. And we want some adjustments to it, and we are gonna suggest eighty decibels as a volume of the sound. Uh, this volume is, as I said, like W H O standard, and it's safe to hear for about seven, eight hours. And also in the subway, New York City subway, they allow until up to eighty-five decibels, that is also another evidence that like that is already, uh, New York City had some, that kind of like volume decibel uh in the rule, so why, why not we can't apply in the park? And for the timeframe, uh, the current park rule allows any acoustic instruments to be played from nine A M to ten P M and which includes like way louder sound, like drums can go up to like a hundred decibels, a hundred twenty decibels. So if the sound amplification is even quieter than that, I think it is very reasonable to be allowed to play those in uh amplification. So that's just specifically performers' um requests. And I'm gonna uh play another recording from the last meeting and this person is a resident uh who's living right next to the park, so um I just wanted to share her voice as a resident.
This self, in uh many ways, I was a photographer for um twenty years. I, some of my favorite memories are in the summers and going around the center of the park finding these pockets of musicians, literally pockets of musicians, like beautiful kind of medley of sound without overpowering each other, very respectful. There's, it's a huge part of the community, I'm also a resident, and so I'm affected uh for better or for worse, mainly for better, by the sound in the park. Um, and this doesn't necessarily mean the buskers, um, it's been a really intense time. I actually was really, was happy to have there be such, in certain ways, such an explosion of energy in the park during the past number of years. I also think that it's important for not just expectation management and residents and um performers and tourists but for the safety of the buskers who are being harassed to have a set of standards and expectations, to have respectful balance and boundaries. And again, to protect all of our expectations and our physical, you know, physical beings, not me as much as them. Konami had um proposed this nine A M to ten P M, that is delightful. I would love that, I've never heard Konami's music from my home, but yeah, I mean, it would be lovely to have, you know, a reasonable time for it to end, um, the eighty-five decibel level is wonderful, I appreciate that as a resident. I also think that, uh, personally, I don't think that there should be police in the park, um, I think that they're harmful. Parks Department, I've also seen being um potentially as harmful, um, is what, what I've witnessed, however, um, they are there right now. And I think that if they are there, there are needs to, these, these regulations and expectations need to be in place so that they can't be predatory and uh violent and harass, I've seen it, I've seen six cops ascend on um Konami and other people, seen them wait for there to be like a tiny infringement of something that is already, again, the issue is that it's not very clear, right? It's not clear um what is allowed and what isn't. I think that if the police are gonna be there, they need to enforce the safety of the buskers as well. If, if um there is violence around them, um, I have noticed that there is a really beautiful community, I've also learned about the extensive community from Konami. And really, the community of the creatives and the artists are, who are there, are the ones who are regulating the safety of the park despite the police and our uh ranger presence. So I think that if they're gonna be there, they should be working in support with the, the people who are risking their lives to keep the park safe. Um, there are intimidation, there are tickets, there's bullying, I would be interested in knowing why uh, you know, it, it comes from somewhere, it can be implicit, it could be racism, it can be all of these things, but uh or prejudice, but I'm wondering how much money the city is making off of these creatives who are such a huge part of this community, and let's be honest, they're not treated with respect, it's, I, as a creative, it's really hard to be a creative human in New York City. I think it's important to have very clear, both to the, the permit holders and to the enforcers what is allowed and what isn't, and they should have an opportunity to say, I need to work six days a week, I mean, they're hustling. And they're not just hustling, but they're benefiting, they're enriching my life and many of the people around me.
Um, I've lived in New York City almost uh
Great, so that was a, a voice, one of the resident around the park, and I'm gonna pass to Darren, who is also a resident around the park, um, so yeah, Darren, please, uh, let us hear.
Thank you for the invitation and uh thank you to all the guests that have joined us. I have a unique perspective because I'm not only a resident, but I was also taught how to play guitar by one of the uh buskers uh named Tariq many, many years ago. And I also live right on the park, so I get to hear uh the music and the orchestra uh playing all day. You know, the, the park has had its ups and downs, and you know, the Conservancy as well as the agencies that, you know, serve the park, whether that be you know, the local Washington Square Park uh council as well as any of the other organizations, have done actually phenomenal job over the years, unfortunately. Uh, some of the enforcements have led to situations where I've been harassed and I've witnessed harassment. Um, as a resident, I've witnessed it on other artists, and as an artist, I've witnessed it on myself. I believe that the park is the soul of, of the um, of the village. And if you you know, I think there's a, an incredible opportunity here to really embrace the artists rather than to harass or infringe their rights. And it will do an incredible justice for the community, for the city, for the artists themselves. Um, the residents love it, what they don't love is the danger, that's, that's obvious in the park right now. I mean, there's a corner that we all know of, that we don't go by, we don't walk near it. I, I try to avoid it as much as possible, but I love to, you know, try to enjoy the entire park. And it's obviously affects the, the artists, and uh I know that there was a stabbing recently, there's over the course of the years that have even been murders in the park that I've unfortunately had to see some of the results in the morning, police, you know, police going through uh evidence and, you know, taping off certain, certain parts of the park. But all in all, I, I believe that there's a tremendous opportunity here to embrace the artist, to promote it, to inspire them, because that's, that's what the residents want, that's what tourists want. And that's what the artists just want, so I, I appreciate hearing us out um as an artist and as a resident. And uh, thank you very much for inviting me, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna pass it to Madeline. Uh, Madeline, um, thank you so much.
Hello, everyone, my name is Madeline Mercedes, I have lived uh in New York City practically my whole life, I was born here. And I have a perspective I can even uniquely share with Darren in that my journey in busking in the park was actually began by someone else, another busker teaching me. Someone taught me how to play the drums originally, and uh later on, the bass guitar. So these were things that were definitely, this is during peak COVID times in New York, when people were just allowed to roam the streets freely, you know, after dark. And it was definitely, you know, a, a skill that for me was very beneficial, I saw many people be able to be taught a new skill that you can in theory bring to places other than the park. But now with this police enforcement, I've seen practically every musician who I used to know uh who used to use the park is not just a main source of income for busking, but also just be able to freely play music as they wanted to. They slowly just dissipated, and they don't wanna congregate anymore because of the over-enforcement of the police in the park right now, it is, it is heavily exaggerated. One time I witnessed the police take an instrument uh from someone who wasn't even using it, just 'cause someone near them was. And that level, why should a police officer be able to have that level of enforcement to practically steal somebody's property over amplified sound? We've, you know, we've discussed with residents, you've seen their input firsthand here. They all have a very similar story in that whatever problems are in the park, it is almost never, if ever, related to the music. I know any actual problems that stem from the music. Uh, there are actual problems like Darren brought up, like that one corner of the park that, you know, people never go to, I never see police swarming around there. I never see police standing and, you know, the, the people, the crackheads face, waiting for them to, to act wrong, you know? But they're ready to police musicians and people who make art. I've had to, now in the park, I occasionally sell handmade candles, but I can't even sell anything other than that without the fear that one day, some power-hungry cop is gonna try to ticket me for a painting or something, you know? Because it's very, the rules on artistic expression in parks specifically in New York are so uh, so stringent, so, so strict. And it makes no sense, it is a perfectly logical thing to think, I'm gonna go out to a public place that I can sit down at and play some music. That is a very logical thought, that's not a criminal thought, that's not, that's not a vindictive thought, it's not malicious thought, it's a very benevolent thought that typically builds community. So the fact that it has been, you know, police to the, to the point where I don't even make music in the park anymore usually 'cause I don't wanna face, you know, a ticket would, would destroy me, I can't afford that, you know? I live in New York City. So just all in all, looking at everyone's perspective, and I'm sure you're getting very similar stories. But as someone who literally had to stop performing in the park, just 'cause I didn't wanna risk getting a ticket over my bass amplifier that's really about this big, I keep it small on purpose. It just, it wasn't worth it, and I feel like we're asking for reasonable things. You know, the fact that regulations can even be placed on this alone shows that this is not a harmful thing. You cannot regulate something that, you know what I mean? You ju- you just, you just can't regulate and have a group of people get behind it. The fact that we can set up rules, we have a death limit, we don't wanna perform after a certain time, it shows that there is a middle path that can be reached where both parties are satisfied. And it just, again, it just literally makes no sense, closing argument, it makes absolutely no sense to look at someone playing amplified sound at a reasonable level and think, yep, I am going to ticket this person, I've even seen arrests, I've even seen arrests over amplified sound. So all in all, we just want to be able to perform and do benevolent things like you're supposed to be doing as a citizen of New York and not get ticketed for it. So thank you for hearing me out today and thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Madeline. Great. And next, I wanna pass it to Lee. Um, he is also a performer for many years, um uh, he's a musician and he will share his perspective. Lee-san, uh, could you let us hear?
Yes, can everybody hear me? Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Leroy Webb. I've been coming into Washington Square Park for and doing music, actually, sitting in with musician Scotty with all of the performers that have been uh in the park, buskers, just a conglomerate of individuals that come into the park to express themselves musically. And uh recently, I guess maybe over the last two years, we've seen some dramatic, real dramatic policing uh that have been going on in the park, which makes, for me, as an artist and as a musician, makes no logical sense that police would be involved with people trying to express love. It, it just, for me, it just doesn't make any sense, I've never experienced anything like this. Although I've had to, I, I, I actually do music in the subway system and I've had to fight with police there because they're overzealous. They wanna give you tickets because they need to fulfill a quota and there you are exposed because there's nobody else to give a ticket to, and then ultimately, they give you the ticket when they don't have no legal basis to give you a ticket in the first place. While musical expression is a constitutional right, it should not be infringed upon by people in City Hall, the Mayor's Office, or anybody else for that matter that wants to come and uh suppress that, that reality of our lives as a musician. However, we understand there are elements in the park that needs to also be addressed. There is a corner in Washington Square Park that is, is just a heinous area where distribution of drugs is going on, people are strung out on drugs and has been like that for at least as long as I know I've been coming in the park. And I've been coming in the park for at least twenty-three years. So everybody knows that corner exists, but that part of the park has nothing, absolutely nothing to do with artists and musicians. We are not responsible for the behaviors of people that are, you know, incredulous and they want to, you know, distribute drugs and things of that nature. We are responsible for our uh reality in the park and what we contribute to the park while we there. So what news organizations do and what police do in order to get at the artist and shut us down, they utilize that reality over in the far end of the park to say, you can't be in the park, we need to be here because uh you are violating the the uh amplification rules and things of that nature, so they, they use that that reality that goes on, the negative reality, to associate with us, and it's appalling, indeed, it's appalling. And it's, it's, it's just makes no sense to me at all. So we need some kind of reality, where we as artists, as musicians Where we as artists, as musicians, as dancers, as visual artists. To continue to express ourselves with love because it's all born out of love. We love the people that we perform music to and we don't want those people to uh to not be able to enjoy it. It's it's just a haven of love when people are seeing musicians do music. And they come in and they dance and they smile and they organize and it, it's just like heaven. Like Sunday when we were there, Sunday in the protest. If you were to walk in the park from the east, west, north or south, you would have felt a vibe that was astronomical. It was feeling so good, so wonderful, you don't even wanna leave because of that feeling. And this is life. This is not something that is an aberration of life. This is what life actually is. Where people of all, people of all colors, creeds, nationalities, visitors can come in. And they can enjoy us, the musicians. So we do, I know where I'm at while I do music. There's an eighty-five decibel rule. That you can play music as long as you want to with amplification devices, as long as you're not on the platform. People can come through, they can hear you. There's, there's no policing as far as that is concerned. We would like the same reality to go in the park. So that people can continue to live, continue to be healed with the music, with the artistry. With the visual artistry, the dancing, the motivation of the artists so that they can enjoy. Thank you for listening, hearing me out, and I appreciate uh this beautiful and wonderful meeting that we're having right now.
So we heard a lot of performers voice, so now I'm passing to Peter, uh, who is a poet. And also uh vending candles in Washington Square Park. So Peter, could you hear, uh, could you let here?
Hi, Konamiya. Uh, I'm Peter. The only thing uh I wanna, I don't wanna be very short is uh I've been selling uh poems in the park since twenty seventeen. And uh for the first several years, there were almost never any police in the park. Um, certainly, there weren't any permanently stationed there. Um, and that's been a more recent development just since the pandemic. Uh, and it's unnecessary and it doesn't add to the safety of the park and just creates conditions for uh people to be harassed. I think we can go back uh to no police in the park. Uh, and I think that'd be a beautiful version of the park to exist in. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, I'm passing it to Zach.
Hey, everyone. Um, thanks for coming. Thanks for everyone coming. Um, thanks for hearing out all those artists at Washington Square Park. I guess I'll get the brief background of like who I am and you know what I do in the park. I moved to New York in like two thousand ten with the dream of becoming an artist at the age of thirteen. So I went to LaGuardia High School of Arts, then I got a BFA at Parsons School of Design and Illustration. And then, um, yeah, I sought to like begin my freelance career as an illustrator in Washington Square Park by doing portraits there. So I've been doing that since two thousand eighteen and uh, yeah, to this date, I've drawn about fifteen thousand people in the park. Every day I'm there, I draw about fifty people in the park. And uh, Konami, I'm not sure if you can share access for me, but I have a little presentation I'd like to give. I don't know if I can do that on my hands.
I think I can do that. Let me try. I think now I, uh, you can share your screen. Could you turn that?
Cool. So this is what I do every weekend at Washington Square Park. I draw a lot of kids, families, couples, dogs. Um, as you can see, no one here looks totally distressed. All ages, all happy people, making smiles. So aside from this being part of my livelihood. Uh, it's also part of sort of my purpose and spiritual work, in which I'm making people smile every day. Last year, uh, Gigi and Bella Hadid, the supermodels approached me, asked for a drawing of uh Gigi's daughter. So I drew them all on a bench. So goes to show that everyone from all spectrums of New York. Uh, are participating with the artists at Washington Square Park. Here's some more people uh that I've drawn. And then these are messages that I got on a weekly basis of people asking if I'll be at the park and if they can come to the park to get a drawing. And basically, my point was showing this is showing that the artists are an attraction at the park. Here's evidence of it. People come to the park for the artists. They bring their families, their kids, their dogs, you name it. And then here are people with their, sharing their experiences of the park. So this creates an unforgettable memory for people's visits to New York City. It's a very unique park, one of the most unique parks in the world. I've actually been in international locations. And I've bumped into people that have recognized me and been like, hey, you drew me at Washington Square Park. So, you know, the the park is known for for us artists. Um, here's illustration I did about two years ago, the parks that I just wanted to share. Yeah, this is the park we all love and we're fighting for because, you know, it's not cool that we're getting cracked down on with this over enforcement. I'd like to have the freedom to have an umbrella shading me while drawing fifty people a day, you know, that'd be pretty nice. And I get a hundred fifty dollar ticket for that. Another point I wanna raise is that uh we're actually, we're essentially free tour guides and assistants at the park. Numerous times a day, you know, Eric brought this up in his protests, we get asked where the bathroom is, we get asked where the Dosa guy is. You know, we get asked where Soho is, you name it, and we provide those directions and that guidance in New York. Also, me personally, I've been of assistance to police and witnessing a super violent crime happen right in front of me. I saw a guy smash someone else over the head with a metal chair. So later that day, a P P officer came up to me, asked me what I saw. And then the following week, a private investigator came up to me and asked me what I saw and I gave my account. So I think the point is to use artists as allies in this case against the violence in the park. Um, we're stationed there for multiple hours. We see a lot of things. And I think aside from the beautiful things we contribute to the park artistically, we can be of assistance. You know, to just keeping it a safe place. Uh, with that, that's sort of the note I'm leaving off. Yeah, thanks for hearing me out.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Uh, Zach, if you could send me back the the host. Uh, status, that'd be great. You can click on my faces like up right corner. There's a three dots and. Yeah, I think you can send the host.
Let me see where that is.
There's my face, right? And there's a top right corner, there's a three dots.
Yeah, do you know where I go to next? Meeting settings or, sorry about this, guys?
No, no, no.
If you go to the bottom of the screen on the middle, there should be a tab for participants. If you click once on that, then Konami's name is gonna appear. And then I think it's a right click on the three ellipses and then it should be uh make host.
Just take care of it. Konami, you're hosting.
Yes, I see that now. Thank you so much for the assistance, Mark. Yeah, thank you, Zach. Right, and so that's basically our voice uh from the park, right? Uh, we heard from residents, performers and vendors. And before moving on to all the organizations, um, I wanna hear from Max. Uh, the legislative director of the city council.
I've still yet to talk.
Uh, we're gonna have open discussion part and there are so many other people who haven't spoken yet. So uh, uh, you're you're gonna have a chance uh later.
Right, yeah, first of all, you know, thank you all for sharing. I mean, yeah, like, it's amazing what you all do. And like, I'm sorry that the police are doing this. I think, you know, we are definitely agreeing with you about the, you know, there's a lot of over policing, policing in Washington Square Park. And I know Ian and the council member last year did, you know, do a lot of, they met with the the sixth precinct a bunch. I know there was a push. To try and reduce the the enforcement of you all in the park. It sounds like what Konami was saying in the beginning, it might have worked a little bit, but it's definitely getting worse now. So yeah, I mean, I think uh, there's, yeah, so I think on one hand, you know, that's in the, we're. Just on our own as a council office, you know, we can kind of renew those discussions with with the sixth precinct. They're not the ones that, like, you know, we can't guarantee that they can listen to us, but we'll certainly be pushing them because. Yeah, it's not okay what they're doing to you all. You know, they shouldn't be, you know, preventing you just from performing in the park and finding all these minor infractions to to get you. I'm gonna say, we definitely wanna help you with that and kind of use use our influence and as the council office to to stop that. So, you know, I'm definitely gonna be making sure that, you know, us in the council, you know, we we kind of restart those discussions with the sixth precinct about that. And then in terms of, yeah, kind of your, the legislative idea of, right? And if I understand correctly, right, so kind of. Kind of getting rid of needing a sound permit under eighty decibels, right? That's that's the, that's the kind of the proposal. So you would, to perform, you wouldn't need. The the um, the the permit, right? That's. Konami, is that, is that, is that, that's the plan?
Sorry, I was replying to the Joe's. Uh, could you repeat one more time?
Oh, yeah, see, to just make sure that I understand correctly. So, so the kind of proposal that you all have is to get rid of. Like, then, you know, or get rid of the the requirement for you all to have permits below eight decibels, right? So you wouldn't need a permit to to perform in the park?
Uh, thank you for asking that. So what, for the permit, I need to clarify this. The current permit is uh not designed for daily buskers. You took, you know, I look at the petition, but just, it's something we cannot get anyway. Like, let's, it costs seventy dollars per day in total, if we really wanna be completely legal. So twenty-five dollars for events permit, forty-five dollars for sound permit, in total seventy dollars just for a day. And I called the office another day. And so I am a daily street performer and I perform up to six days a week. And so how, what can I do about that? And they were like, oh, this is only for one day event. Uh, not designed for daily recurring event, so we cannot issue that for daily performances. So my point is technically, the permit for daily buskers don't, it doesn't exist as of now.
Right.
So I think the most ideal uh way of solution is changing the park rule. As I said already, um, if we relax the park rule from no, absolutely no amplification situation into. We can allow amplification from nine AM to ten PM. Uh, eighty decibels or below. Um, in that way, we can still express our freely and respecting neighbors at the same time. Uh, and if you really need to set up a new permit system for the daily buskers. It has to be, you know, another extra conversations and work to figure out what what would be reasonable. When we think about the permit will be for daily street performers. So the solution we want is change of the park rules. But if it's absolutely something impossible, then the new permit should be very reasonable for daily street performers. Did I ask your question?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's very, very helpful. So thank you. Yeah, cuz I, yeah, I do think. Yeah, cuz, yeah, I can't say, cuz again, like, like I said, this is only my kind of my second week in this role, so I can't say yet yes or no to the the kind of getting rid of. But I I, there's definitely a conversation here to create something new. Yeah, cuz. Whether or whether it is getting rid of permits entirely or creating a new system so that you can perform daily, that's definitely a conversation we wanna have and kind of brainstorm around. So, yeah, I can't say yes or no right now, but, you know, we definitely want to work on something to figure out how to change the current system to create a way for you all to. Be able to perform daily, whether it's no permits or just a, an affordable daily permit or something else. You know, we, that's kind of, you know, I know, you know, we've spoken about multiple meetings. I think this is, you know, the conversation we can have moving forward is. How to, yeah, you know, what what is the solution and then figuring out kind of what what we can put in place.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I will pass it to uh Trevor from Washington Square Association.
I'm sorry, Konami, can I, can I ask something of Max before we move on? Is that all right?
I'm okay with it.
Max, uh, I I just wanted to add, uh, it is not the sixth precinct that just patrols the park. Oftentimes, there are, uh, we've had uh patrols from the Battery, from Flatiron, from the Bronx. From Harlem, uh, they send rookies down that do not understand the rules, the codes, or the culture of the park. And uh, from my understanding, it's like a word of the day enforcement where they're told there's a word to look out for. Sometimes it's having art leaning on the ground, sometimes it's umbrella, whatever it is. Uh, many, many officers that come through this park on a daily basis are not out of the neighborhood sixth precinct. I just wanted to add that for for your knowledge in case you didn't know.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful cuz I didn't know that. That's actually really good to know. So, yes, then, you know, we can make this a conversation we're having with One Police Plaza, not this one specific precinct. Yeah, that's actually very helpful. So thank you.
Sorry, Max, just real quickly, what we've been told by the sixth precinct is they are bringing in from other precincts for overtime shifts. So that's what they've been telling us, is that those those officers who are coming in, that's the information we've been provided. But, yeah, so that is, you know, something we've been hearing from a lot of folks that they're running into officers who are not from the sixth precinct. And that's the information that we've gotten when we've asked why those officers are there, is that they're hovering overtime shifts with officers from other precincts.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, like I said, yeah, so, you know, we can kind of bring this to One Police Plaza and not just the the sixth precinct.
Great, uh, thank you for all the clarification and sharings. Um, I will pass it to Trevor from Washington Square Association. Uh, Trevor, uh, can you speak?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. You can hear me? Great. Um, first off, I just wanna say thank you for everyone's artistic contributions. Um, I grew up on Washington Square Park. Uh, I've seen it evolve. I've seen most of you in the park and it's wonderful to be able to hear from you directly and. Hear your stories and tell your narratives to the wonderful contributions to the artistic fabric of Washington Square Park. Uh, you know, we as an organization believe artistic expression is core to the park's identity and credit trilogy and its reputation in New York City and the world. And the WSA has been fierce advocates for artistic expression for over a century. Whether it's the Washington Square Music Festival, the Village Trip, and other things we've done to advocate for artists in the park. Uh, at the same time, we are on record asking for more consistent enforcement of regulations. Um, which I think is part of what you're asking for, and I wanna dig into that a little bit. Um, but, you know, the, the lack of consistent enforcement at times has led to lawlessness, violence, various different chaos in the park. You know, specifically, and you guys have mentioned this, we've, we've seen increased violence in the park, including a fatal shooting, a stabbing all in the last month. The northwest corner of the park is rampant with illegal activity and we've created a system. Where the NYPD doesn't think it's worth their time to make arrests for open drug use or hyperdemic needles on the ground. Heavily inebriated or verbally abused the people that you as artists also have to deal with. And that creates a challenging environment for for you to practice your artistic endeavors. Uh, and we've been on record recently talking about the fact that it's just unacceptable. We have unlicensed vendors openly selling marijuana mushrooms throughout the park. And even within fifty feet of our kids' playgrounds, if somebody opened up and started selling beer, that thing would be shut down in thirty minutes, right? Like, there's, there's, there's a process for licensing and 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 consistent enforcement. I guess my question, you know, for you is, uh, you know, it pains me to hear the amount of effort we're spending on things like enforcing umbrella regulations. Or your, your, your JBL speaker and your primary speaker is, is your primary complaint that the police are enforcing beyond the stated regulations? Or that the regulations are too stringent for buskers and artists?
I would say first, we are really upset with the level of overenforcement. In fact, the umbrella rule is a made up rule. They pulled it from sanitation buildings. So, I mean, we're dealing with something that we've never dealt with before here in the park. The level of overenforcement, and to, to be clear, there are no rules that allow us to be here. So the sword of Damocles is what's called the fifty-foot rule, which I don't know how many of you are familiar with, but the city has a code, a law, a rule that you can't uh, quote unquote, bend within fifty feet of a monument. Well, Washington Square Park is all monuments. The fountain's a monument. The fifty-feet rule goes back to the bench behind me by about six feet. So technically, I'm not a legal participant in the park. And the reason I say that is because park enforcement and the police decide on a daily basis whether I'm a vendor or if I'm covered under the First Amendment. And so that is really what we're up against, is a whole system that is built to not include us. And, uh, in, inside of that system is an enforcement mechanism that picks us off one at a time. Until finally, I mean, I'm sorry I jumped in like this, but I am so over this after seven years and having like a decent relationship up until the pandemic with parks, with the police. And to have it turn around, the year twenty twenty-two was an awful enforcement year, starting on Juneteenth, when fifty cops were in the park with three cars in the plaza with lights on. And that just started the whole year. And for me to even think that it could get worse than it was in twenty twenty-two is amazing. But it has, it has gotten a lot worse in the last two weeks, such to the point that it is untenable to be an artist in this park. Many have left and not returned. You're losing culture. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't mean to go on and start speechifying, but um, it is, is the dual, it's the dual problem of laws that don't include us and enforcers that try to drive us out. Thank you.
Um, so, I, I think part of trying to find a solution uh, is to break it up into its different pieces, right? It, it's clear that you're highlighting that the current rules need to be amended if we want to promote this type of activity, that the, the laws need to be clarified. And I also wonder if there are mechanisms other than this, uh, which um, you know, is a little bit more anecdotal than systemic. I'm like a data guy, right? And I know that like three-one-one reports work generally in focusing efforts elsewhere. I, I don't know if there's a mechanism for artists to talk about, you know, overenforcement or harassment, and I'd, I'd love to see a system where we can both monitor the scope of the issue and also provide a feedback mechanism to inform us as what is happening on the ground, because your, your stories are, are very poignant and, um, you know, I think, uh, we need to find a way to measure it. So, you know, uh, a, as a Washington Square Association, again, I think part of it sounds like inconsistency of the regulations. Part of it is, sounds like the regulations need to be adapted. Um, uh, and, you know, we'd love to, to, to figure out how we can all come together, cuz the solution to these type of problems are just what you're doing today, which is bringing the various different parties together and finding, uh, a way to, you know, understand, identify the problem, the scope, and then identify solutions that meet both the artist needs and the community needs together. So thank you for, for organizing this.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I will pass it to, uh, Grace from Washington Square Park Conservancy.
Hello, hi, if everyone can hear me. Um, so really quickly introduce myself. I'm Grace. I'm the Community Relations Director for the Washington Square Park Conservancy, um, which is a pretty fancy title considering I'm one of three staff, uh, on our team. Um, I am a New Yorker myself. I was born and raised in Manhattan. My best friend growing up lived over the Knickerbocker, so I have countless childhood memories of hanging out in Washington Square Park and being there. So it holds as special of a place in my heart as in all of yours. Um, there are a couple of different things that I want to, you know, address um, and clarify, cuz I know one of the big confusions is why is there a Washington Square Association and Washington Square Park Conservancy? We are two different organizations. Um, the Washington Square Association is the oldest community organization in the city, um, and they existed long before us. Um, and they are neighborhood as well as the park, um, Washington Square Neighborhood. We, uh, came about, it'll be eleven years this October. Um, we're about a decade old. Um, and are really focused internally at the park. So our mission is on, um, the, the most important thing that we do is we fundraise to fund staff at the park. Um, it varies from park to park. Every park is different. Every conservancy is different. At some conservancies, there's, the, the staff working at the park is a conservancy staffer, like, uh, I think it's like that at Central Park. At Washington Square Park, all of the staff there are New York City Parks Department staff. So we fundraise and then give a grant to the Parks Department to fund, it's now fourteen, um, full and some part-time staff. Um, so when I say we don't have a management role with the park, I am being genuine. Um, you know, that is not the case for every conservancy, but that is the case for ours. Um, as I said before, we're a really small team. It's myself, our executive director, who is a dual role position within the Parks Department. Um, that is a position that has been approved by um, the Community Board and has been that way since the conservancy's inception over a decade ago. Um, and then it's a, a programs manager, um, named Caitlin, and she runs our free programming, um, for which we do go through the New York City Parks Department system to obtain, um, you know, event permits. Um, that's things like free fitness classes, um, we, you know, have arts and crafts classes in the playgrounds for the kids, things of that nature. Um, and then we also uh, coordinate the volunteer efforts for the park. Um, so we run five, uh, recurring, so people who come back and, and work with us on a weekly basis pretty much for volunteering, and then we do monthly volunteering. So that's the scope of what we do. Um, you know, I had seen some stuff going around on social media saying that we just sent out some kind of, um, fundraising effort for enforcement. Um, we haven't sent out a fundraising email in like the last six weeks at least, so if someone could share that with me, I'd like to see it. It might be from last year. Um, we do send them out frequently. I'd like to see that. However, one clarification I really need to make, when we talk about fundraising for enforcement, we are specifically referring to we program in the northwest corner, that problem corner everyone is talking about. Because we don't have an enforcement role in the park, the impact we can make is programmatic. So we've tried a whole lot of different things there. Currently, we're running a Friday night games night that's in there from five-thirty to seven-thirty every Friday, and we do contract with a private security company to be in that corner at that time, just in, you know, keeping in mind that we want everyone to feel safe and be safe in that space. So in that space specifically, um, we do contract for that private security. They are there during our programming when we're setting up and cleaning up and things like that. Um, so another thing I wanna touch on, you know, I heard a lot of, um, you know, back and forth about the inconsistency in enforcement. That's something we've been hearing about a lot. You know, what, what we've been told by the Parks Department and by the NYPD is that for a really long time, their resources, their enforcement resources, i.e. during the pandemic, were just going elsewhere. Um, so that's their reason to us for why they've been, why there has been inconsistency in enforcement. Um, obviously, I'm a nonprofit employee. I don't work for the city. I, I don't know. Um, I can't speak to that unfortunately. Um, my understanding as well for the amplified sound, I think that is actually an NYPD thing. I don't know if Parks has control over that rule in New York City Parks Department. That's, that's all. Parks isn't on here. I don't know. Um, but like, sound permits, to my understanding, have to be obtained from the sixth precinct. So I think it's the, the NYPD that has control over that. I don't know if it's a Parks Department rule. Um, the main thing I wanna be clear about, we are not trying to push anyone out. There is a massive problem, as you say, in the northwest corner. It does sometimes get conflated with there is illegal vending going on. We all know what I'm talking about in, in, you know, uh, the, the plaza around the fountain. Um, but that is our concern. Um, you know, the, the busking and the vending, you know, the expressive matter use, that is something that has been part of the park for at, ever. Um, it's part of the tradition and it's an important part of the tradition. Um, so we don't wanna see it go away. We, you know, we need, I think guidance is the big message coming out of this meeting. Um, you know, in addition to all of the other various things that the, the city agencies and our city partners can, can take on here. Um, you know, is, is further guidance on for everybody, including, you know, the people that are enforcing the rules.
Great.
And I'm gonna just quickly put my email in the chat, so if anyone wants to reach out and connect with me separately, I'm totally open to that. Um, if you message us on social media, I am, I am our social media. Um, so you can also reach out to me directly there. Um, and I'm in the park, you know, uh, pretty much every day. So I'm, I'm happy to come talk to anyone. Um, you know, this is you are part of the community. We are here for the community. Um, you know, when it, when it comes to advocating for stuff, our energy, um, as I said, we're a really small team. Our energy tends to be on bringing in resources. Um, so for example, during the pandemic, when there were a lot of folks in the park, you know, dealing with um, substance abuse issues, dealing with, um, you know, people who are facing homelessness. Um, we were advocating for social workers to come to the park. We don't know how to help those people. I'm not a social worker. No one on our staff is. We don't, we're not the experts in that. Um, so that's the kind of advocacy we do. Um, you know, asking for, from our social workers to come in and things like that. Um, so I'm, I'm open to hearing any ideas, uh, as well on, on how we can help and, and, you know, be a, a, a voice and you know, listen to all of you and, and hear what you have to say and keep, keep that tapestry of Washington Square Park alive.
Thank you. I need to move on, but, um, that was nice to hear from you. Thank you, Grace. Um, I will pass it to Mark Dealer from Community Board Two. Uh, hello, Mark.
Thank you. Um, it, uh, so a little bit of background may be helpful in a couple of different respects. Uh, one is what a community board is, and sometimes maybe what it is not. Um, and then a little bit about me. So I'll start very quickly with me, um, uh, a certain affinity to the issues and concerns that have, uh, been presented today stems from my son being a struggling opera singer and from my own experience, and went to LaGuardia, by the way, so, um, uh, a nice connection there. Um, and, um, and from my own experience playing, um, taiko, which are these gigantic wooden Japanese drums um, in a variety of contexts. So I get a little bit of the challenges, although I've never had to make a living doing this, and I think I can probably safely say I'd be more likely to make a living agreeing not to sing than to sing. Um, the, um, so, so I get the, the challenges of struggling artists, um, uh, and, and our city should be welcoming of that. A community board is a group of fifty volunteers. I am the, uh, the paid, if you will, chief of staff. I'm the district manager for the paid staff that supports the fifty volunteers and also provides constituent services in parallel with a lot of the staffs of our elected officials. Max is a great example of that, so thanks for being right there to, to, to point to. Um, we have varying, uh, we're, we're, our board members are appointed by elected officials. Most important thing to remember is that we are advisory. Um, we do not make final determinations on anything. We make recommendations. We make recommendations, by the way, and everything from zoning and land use. So a question of, well, we're talking about Washington Square Park. There's a reason why those beautiful buildings on the north side of Washington Square Park are only as tall as they are. Um, I'm sure that some developer somewhere would lust after some of those nice, um, federal-style buildings and create something that, uh, would sell for a lot of money, but, uh, but zoning protects us from that. And our board has a key role in any kind, anybody that wants to change that. And it goes all the way from there to whether or not your restaurant should have a liquor license and an outdoor cafe. Um, and a lot of things in between. So a lot of quality of life issues cross our desks and so forth. Um, among them, uh, I heard references to social workers and so forth, and one of the things that we do is, uh, submit budget requests to the city, um, to fund a variety of things. Um, social workers in schools, for example, is one that we, we work with. And we work every month with, um, a variety of uniformed agencies, including the Department of Homeless Services and the, what's called the MOX, the, uh, the Metropolitan Outreach Consortium, Goddard Riverside and so forth, the people who are trying to provide services to the deeply troubled individuals who populate the part of the park that we're all talking about. And I think it's important in this conversation to recognize that these, these people, while being incredibly scary and dangerous at times, are also people deserving of our empathy and respect at some human level. Um, so, uh, our board speaks primarily through, uh, resolutions adopted by a majority of the fifty members. Uh, so I'm here today mostly to listen. I'm grateful for that opportunity. Um, one of the things that we learn in our work at a community board is that there are always competing interests and they are never more prevalent than in the public realm. And the public realm, of course, includes the park. Um, believe me when I tell you that some of the most heated battles I've, I'm also a member of a community board in a different part of the city. And some of the most heated battles we've had are over parking spaces. So the ways in which we all interact with one another and with enforcement, um, it, it makes a huge difference to separate, how do I phrase it? To separate regulations that deal with you says versus users. And one of the things that I'm hearing today that I have to think about, and I'm certainly not speaking for the board, and I'm probably making the usual mistake I make of speaking without thinking, is how does one distinguish between Mark Diller, whom no one wants to hear say anything in the park, and people like yourselves who have, uh, an accomplished, um, contribution to make through our society? Um, you have to, you have to talk about you says, what you can and can't do, um, versus who's doing it. And so that's one of the things that, uh, I'm hearing about, the ways in which regulations affect your work. Um, the other, of course, is that as a community board, we are tasked with protecting the quality of life of all residents, not all of whom, um, have my taste in music, for example. More is the pity. Um, so, um, so, so I'm taking back, I take, I, the reason you've been looking at my top of my bald head is because I've been taking notes this whole time. Um, I will share them with our board, uh, leadership. Um, and we will work, I, I, I wanna stress that, that we will work to accommodate what we can. Um, but I wanna be careful that that work, um, be respectful of all park users and all constituents that surround the park. Um, acknowledging the impossibility of that state, of that statement. Uh, you know, one will never make everybody happy. There's an old song in the law that says when you make a compromise and everybody walks away from the table equally unhappy, then you've probably accomplished something. So, um, that's, I guess, what I can offer for right now, other than to say that I am uh, happy to work with Max and with, uh, all of the uh, acknowledged leadership organizations that are on the call and, and those that are, that be with us going forward to find a solution that fits within the rubrics that I've offered. Um, and to be useful in a way that, that, that respects the community. So let me give it back to Konami after that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so I know some people haven't, uh, spoken yet, so from here, we can ask questions to each other and if something needs to be clarified, uh, we can make sure those stuff each other. So, uh, uh, I think Joe, uh, you have something to say, so for now, I will pass it to you.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, many of you probably know my work. I've made sand paintings in Washington Square for over twelve years up until COVID. And, uh, I've, I've made ephemeral artworks in public for nearly thirty years. So I have a lot of experience with, uh, police and authoritarians, uh, wanting to stop me from what I'm doing. Uh, faced arrest many times, and in two thousand and eleven, uh, there was a similar type of crackdown uh, where, uh, pep officers were issuing, uh, I think they're called EBC tickets or something. Um, and, uh, between myself, Colin and, uh, Tic and Tac, we accumulated over twenty thousand dollars worth of tickets. And just as something, uh, advisable to artists is that, if you're performing, it is your constitutional right of free if you're performing, it is your constitutional right of free expression. That is uh guaranteed under the Constitution, expressive acts under Texas versus Johnson, where the flag was burned. It was challenged back in the Bush era, uh, George Senior era. And that uh expressive acts are guaranteed rights under the Constitution. So there should be no permits necessary. Uh, when it comes to park rules, I believe it was Trevor stated earlier that the rules are, that's defined that fifty feet from a monument, five feet from a bench, that leaves one spot in the entire park. And that's been a standing thing. That's been, um, you know, where they make the the rule so near, uh, so vague that uh there's absolutely, they can catch you on anything at any time. But um, that uh, there was a recording of this community board meeting back, I believe it was like December two thousand eleven or January two thousand twelve, when all this crackdown during Occupy Wall Street was happening. And it was the community, uh, the uh, Earl President at the time stated on tape that buskers are and performers are allowed in the park to um perform and accept tips. Uh, so if you're facing anything, my advice to anybody who's facing police, break out your phone, record the entire conversation. Do uh, you know, be polite, you know, listen to them. If they want to ticket you, fine. Uh, take the ticket and continue performing because it is your constitutional right. Um, if they want to arrest you, they're doing it unconstitutionally. But um, there, you know, there's these rules. And back in that same era of Robert Letterman, who's on the on the call, uh, challenged a bunch of this stuff, uh, all the way to Supreme Court about vending and tables and such. And those, at that time, the parks set up the medallion system in Union Square. I believe uh, up near Columbus Circle and Central Park or maybe, maybe uh, different parks, but not Washington Square. There are no medallions in Washington Square Park to set up tables and sell things. And that is a rule that's been, you know, completely thrown out the window during COVID. And it's for expressive matter, you know, so uh, poetry and all that sort of thing. Fine, but not candles, trinkets, jewelry, weed, mushrooms. All those vending stands are illegal and and maybe an unpopular opinion, but Washington Square at the time was sort of delegated as a performer based park. And uh, so you know, there's medallions at Union Square and and street vending places in Soho and so forth. So, um, you know, take, take the ticket, fight your constitutional rights. All those tickets of twenty thousand dollars between the three of us, we're all dropped out of court, um, because we banded together and held a press conference. And um, never paid a dime. And I actually pursued it afterwards as an illegal case and won. So it's, it's a matter of standing up for your rights. Don't be intimidated by the police. Uh, you're gonna win in court. It's, it's your right as an American. If that goes away, forget it. It's uh, you know, uh, it's been a long struggle, you know, all all the time. It resurfaces continually. But we need to uh, adjust those rules to make sure they're written to allow performers. And you know, if if it's, you know, vendor vending of artworks or whatever, setting up a table, I think is perfectly okay. Uh, permitted uh amplified sound up to a certain level of a respectful level. Uh, but that's always overpowered by drums and other things in the park. Uh, so noise has always been an issue uh of overlapping sound shapes uh from different musicians. So um, you know, rules are in place for the benefit of all. We have to remember that, that we are, with the rights come the responsibilities of, you know, fitting in and finding a good distance from another performer, if that's the case. Uh, it's, it's about being respectful and and allowing the park to be used by everyone. Uh, as an artist, uh, I've, you know, I've not been down there during COVID or after because the the conditions there have just been insane. It's, you know, with all the parties and things through COVID and and now all the weed dealers and stuff, it drives away the audience and the family friendly atmosphere that we would like to enjoy. So um, I just want to say that. And if you are an artist or performer, you know, be within the rules. Uh, if you can get away with not amplifying, do not do that. And uh, you know, stand up for your rights, record the interaction with police and uh, keep it real. We got a fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so if you have any questions to each
How about me?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Robert. I'll pass it to you.
Okay, can you hear me? All right. Look, I have a different perspective on this than anybody else in this meeting. I've been vending my art on the street and in parks since nineteen sixty-one. The lawsuits that made it legal to sell in the park or on the street, they're my lawsuits. I've met with all the past mayors, with the heads of the conservancies, with the heads of the business improvement districts, with the police commissioners. None of this enforcement is coming from the police department. The police department doesn't decide what they're going to do enforcement on. It comes from the bids and from the park conservancies. The park conservancies wrote the rules for expressive matter vendors in parks that were passed in twenty ten. So the park conservancies are the people that made it so restrictive that there's not even one legal spot in Washington Square Park and barely a legal spot in any other park in the city. I'm no defender of the police. I've been falsely arrested forty-four times. I've gotten a hundred summonses. I beat every summons and every arrest. I'm not a lover of the police, but to blame the police for this, as if they're sending themselves to your stand to harass you because they they just feel like doing it, it's not the reality. And the proof of that is that for long stretches of time, they don't show up at all. The reason they suddenly show up is that there's a lot of pressure on them to come there and do the harassment. Now, back in the early nineties, when the, when my group artist was formed and when every single street artist in the city was being arrested almost on a daily basis, believe it or not, the people begging for that to happen were the people in Community Board Two. That was run by Catherine Freed, the council member at the time. And that was a very artistic group of people, the Soho Alliance, Community Board Two. They love art, they love the village, they love artists. They begged the mayor to make more artists arrests on a daily basis. And that's what you're seeing now. When the police are at your stand and they're harassing you, it's not coming from the cop. It's not, certainly not coming from the pep officers who can't even write you a summons without calling a supervisor for permission. Those, those efforts are coming directly from the park conservancies.
That is not the case here.
I'm not talking about you or at this moment.
I'm just being clear. Well, you're saying conservancy, this conservancy did not exist when when that was happening.
And I've written that in various articles I've written that you did not exist when the park rules were written in twenty ten, okay? Um, but I I was there. I'm actually the first person that the park commissioner told about these rules because he had me arrested on the High Line. Mayor Bloomberg put us together in a meeting because he wanted to settle that case. And Commissioner Bennet, the com- park commissioner at the time, said, Robert, we're gonna come up with new rules because we don't want any of you artists on the High Line. And they sat down with all the park conservancies. They measured everything. They deliberately made, for example, the distance of a sidewalk, the width of a sidewalk in the vending law is, has to be twelve feet. So what they did in these rules, they said there's gotta be twelve feet of clearance after you put a three foot table or stand. That means the sidewalk has to be fifteen feet. There are no fifteen foot sidewalks in any of the parks, especially in Washington Square Park. So when you find the police or the pep harassing you, intimidating you, summoning you, you need to understand where that's coming from. It's easy to get angry at the police. And I've certainly had a lot of anger at the police when they took my art, when they handcuffed me, when they destroyed my art. But that's not where this is coming from. And if you're gonna persist in imagining that this is about the police being brutal and the police over enforcing, you're missing who the actual villains in this story are.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hey, hey, Robert. Uh, this is Trevor Sumner from the Washington Square Association. Um, given that the conservancy didn't exist and 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 we, I I I'm not aware of the conservancy in any way advocating for higher enforcement on the artists, uh, and we certainly aren't. Uh, we've, we've seen a lot of our constituency focused on cannabis sales, violence, the northwest corner. Given your experience, where do you think this might be coming from and how do we stop it? Or how do we focus it in the right area so that we focus on the problems that matter in the park?
Well, like I said, I've been vending since sixty-one. All through that time, there have been periods, even under Mayor Koch, where there was no vending enforcement. And then suddenly, there'd be fierce vending enforcement. So what you had in Washington Square Park because of the pandemic, things got really slack. Everybody took advantage of that. Eventually, the pot dealers said, hey, why don't we set up tables too? And then the pressure from the New York Post, from the community boards, from the conservancies, from the neighborhood people put a lot of pressure on the police department. It embarrassed the mayor. It certainly embarrassed the police commissioner. And they launched a crackdown, as they've done hundreds of times through the years. Right now, they're doing a big crackdown in Brooklyn and in Queens on food vendors. Previous to that, they were letting them do anything they wanted, as if there were no vending laws at all. Now they're enforcing every slightest obscure detail of the vending law. Contrary to what some of you might think, the umbrella law's been in the vending law for years. They're misapplying some of the laws. And in a lot of cases, the officers don't know the law because they're getting a five minute briefing from their sergeant who sends them out, writes some summonses, chase people out, and they do a really sloppy job of it. But it's not coming from the police officers. It's coming from the various agencies and especially from the park conservancies. And I'll say one last thing. Whether the Washington Square Park Conservancy runs the park or officially has something to say about enforcement, they're talking about enforcement in their newsletters. They're mentioning it in a fundraiser. They certainly, they're in the park. This Grace says she's in the park every day. So obviously, she's firsthand observing the harassment. I don't see one word coming out of the conservancy, oh, please stop harassing the artists and the performers. So when I see that, then I'll believe how much you really love performers and street artists.
I think that if I may jump in for a real quick second here, that any future dialogue about this group or about this issue would be much more enhanced and more productive if it were not personal. So um, I would encourage all of us to speak about the issues and about what can and cannot be done and um about the folks that are not on this call as well as those that are. Find a good and peaceful and just solution to issues that I think merit the kind of attention they're getting today. If Grace's name were left out of it and the uh, and and the organizations we work with and for um, are engaged on an issues basis level, that's what I would, my request.
Well, I'm about talking about reality, not fantasy. And, you know, I have nothing against Grace. I don't know Grace. She's representing the Washington Square Park Conservancy. She's stating that they have nothing whatsoever to do with the with the enforcement. And I'm commenting on that fact.
Said that we do not have a role in the management or uh of the enforcement. That is correct. We are not the NYPD. We are not the Parks Department. They control the officers that are
And I never said that you're doing the enforcement, but all it takes is a phone call from a conservancy, a bid, a city council member's office. That's what launches crackdowns on vendors. That's a reality.
That were the case, I think the reality we would see on the ground in the park is different.
What I see is, is a lot of people being harassed.
We had the ability to to make a phone call and get enforcement. There would be social workers every single second of the day in the northwest corner of the park, helping those people get the resources they need. It is, it is just not the situation. It is not the reality that you are projecting.
Well, I understand that's your position.
In this, in this situation, I cannot speak to other parks. I cannot speak to other conservancies. I can speak to the work that I do at this conservancy.
Uh, the, I I got an email from you. I'm not trying to make this personal, Mark, but I got an email from Grace in which she said that, and I'm paraphrasing, and I can read you the exact text if you need it. She was saying that we love the artists in Washington Square Park. We support the arts. And what we want is to let the artists who are following the rules exactly continue. Well, if you follow the rules exactly, you're out of the park completely.
Help you with. I don't set the rules.
I didn't say you set the rules.
I know, but this is what I'm trying to explain. What, what, we, we have to follow the rules. In order to function in the park, our organization has to follow the rules. Our volunteer, our volunteer events get permits, all of the special events, you know, that we have, we have to follow those rules. I cannot tell people, we cannot tell people, we will not be able to tell people to break rules. We are supportive of the artists and we would like to see guidance because clearly guidance is needed.
The guidance is that they all have to be eliminated. That's the guidance that you're supporting. I've, I've studied the rules since twenty ten. It is impossible for an artist to set up a legal stand in Washington Square Park. And until they amended the rules in twenty thirteen, it was impossible for a performer to work in the park.
I am not an expert. That is not my understanding. That is why I keep saying there needs to be guidance. Because I, I don't understand those rules. So I, that is all I can say. We are.
Okay, sorry. So
I don't know the, I don't know the rules. I'm not the Parks Department.
The meeting time is running out, so I I just want to make sure, uh, is there anyone who wants to speak before we close the meeting?
Uh, I'd like to just add a a second thing, if that's all right. Um, I just, I'd like to, to in invite the folks who we're speaking with today to actually come to the park and speak with us in person. I'm here four days a week. And when I'm here, I'm here twelve hours, thirteen hours a day. I have a very comprehensive understanding of what's happening here, and I'm happy to share it with you. So please, come on by, see the park.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think, Lisa, you need to unmute yourself.
Can I weigh in on it a little bit, please?
We can.
Hello?
We can hear now.
You can unmute me? Okay, so in reality, I've Okay, so in reality, I've spoken over the, over the years to police officers all the way to the deputy director uh concerning Washington Square Park. The reality of it is, hello?
We hear you.
Yes, the reality of it is that somebody, somewhere is, other than the police department, is complaining about what goes on in the park. And it give it, on a given day, I remember doing music one night. It was, it was before ten P M. There was this woman that lived in the neighborhood that came all the way, I think maybe four blocks down and said that she could hear the music four blocks away uh over by the arch, maybe four blocks from the arch. And uh and then maybe, maybe three minutes later, seven minutes later, the police showed up and said that we had to stop doing music. And this was before, this was right a little bit in the epicenter of the pandemic. And uh so we, so I explained to the police officer that, you know, the people want to be healed, they want to get the music, but somebody, somewhere eh other than the police department, eh eh we would not be, we would be remiss to believe that every cop that comes in to Washington Square Park is not being delivered there by somebody in the area that's complaining about what's going on. Eh it's, it's just, this makes sense to what Robert and this man has experienced. We have to pay attention to what he's saying because people are not just doing things on their own behest. The police don't arrive unless somebody call them. And somebody else is saying that, listen, these people are in the park. These are the rules. You need to go enforce that. They're not giving us a break. Whoever, whoever's, whoever's in the organizations that are regulating who comes in the park, who don't come in the park, who, how many feet away we should be this, how many feet away we should do that, what is the sound back here? These people are the actual villains. We, we, we must realize that. And then in order to resolve this, we cannot continue to look at the police as being the villains because I've spoken to many of the police officers. And they come in and they're just saying, well, these are the rules that we, they showed me on their, on their phones and this is the complaint. And they showed a complaint of the person that made the complaint to come into the park and shut down the music. And I've been going to that. I've been doing music in the park nearly twenty years. And I've seen this repeatedly over and over and over again. I was even given permission by one of the deputy, police deputy directors to only you can do music in the park, but we don't want this type of music over here in this corner to be done. So in reality, somebody other than the police department is making the rules and they want those rules enforced. And we have to realize that in order to get the real resolution to the issue of the sound reality that's going on in the park, who could come in the park because essentially, everybody has a constitutional right for freedom of expression. But those, those, those rules and the freedom of expressions are consistently violated. Because police, when they come in, they're listening to somebody else. They're either listening to the mayor's office, they're listening to some politician or they're listening to some specific group that's, that's near and around the park. And I, 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 I have to admit the truth that we all have to look at it realistically in order to really be able to get down to the core reason why these police are showing up. Just like Robert said, I agree with them one hundred percent. We can say, we can go through all of this all we want to, but unless we find out who's really being stringent about these rules and sending the cops to us. Because I'm a, I'm a former US Marine and I'm also a former police officer. Cops just don't show up. They just don't show up. I'm able to have a dialogue with the police because of the capacity that I lived in when I was younger. They're not just showing up. Somebody somewhere sending these police and they're citing the rules to the cops and then they come over and they shut the musicians down. We've been in the middle of performances with thirty, forty people jumping, joining, clapping their hands and the cops come up and shut just your whole thing down. And somebody's doing that and I'm not stupid or naive because they've done it to me multiple times when I was doing music in the subway. I have a bachelor's degree in computer science and I decided to want to be an artist, a musician, a musician in lieu of developing software. And I've, I've had people come by me, walk right by me, shut up, they'll say, shut up! As I'm in the middle of the performance and then three minutes later, here comes the cops. You understand? So it's, it's, we can't, I'm not, I'm not an advocate for the police. I've been arrested multiple times for doing music and doing artistry. But somebody's sending the police over to where the artistry is being done. And we have to realize that. And if we realize that and, and, and seek to resolve those issues and, and try to infer to those individuals, we're just doing music, we're just trying to show love and we don't need these stringent proposals on us. Then we can get somewhere. Otherwise, we're just gonna continue to have these meetings over and over and over and over again. Because when, when somebody decides they want to crack down, they're gonna crack down. And for whatever reasons they come up with, they're gonna crack down. And I agree with Robert one hundred percent. He's a man that has experience. We just can't just look at it and say, oh, well, this is not what's going on. These are realities. I know tick and tack. I know the performers that has been coming to Washington Square Park over the years. That are artistically. Thank you so.
Great. Thank you very much. Sorry, the time is running out and uh I, I want to respect everyone's time because it's already six minutes past. But um me and Max were talking about the next meeting because, you know, this is not something that's gonna solve over one night. And uh we were thinking about August sixteenth, exactly two weeks from now. Uh two P M to three thirty, exactly the same time. Um so if you can make that timeframe available, um we would appreciate that. I, I think um I'm gonna meet Max anyway because um that's obviously ongoing issue and uh we need to keep working on this. So I'm just letting you know. I, I also um sent an email again. Um by uh how that sounds with you. Uh Max, that's what we talked, right? Nothing has changed with that plan?
With, with what? The sixteenth, you mean?
Yes, August.
Yeah, yeah. Sixteenth is August, I mean.
Okay, so that works for you. Uh so yeah, I just wanted to put it out there. Uh and I'm gonna send an email as I said, so like if you have any questions to each other after this meeting, you can maybe uh do the emails and clarify things. So uh uh I know, you know, like we haven't came to the solution completely yet, but we're gonna keep working on this.
Can I quickly add one, just one question, just for, for people, just to, so I, for, for my own research? Just because it seems like there's a lot of park rules that you all know a lot better than I do. If I'm, I'm gonna put my email in the chat, can whether Robert or Eric or someone who kind of knows the complexities of the park rules about the monuments and where you can, can't perform, just send it over to me just so I can review that and we can kind of brain, just like I can brainstorm kind of, you know, what changes could possibly be made. So I'm gonna put my email on the chat. If someone or both of you or all of you can send it over to me, that'd be very helpful.
Robert, do you mind doing that? I'm in the park the next couple of days.
Sure.
Many thanks.
Yes, I will do that. I will send it to you.
Thank you.
But the city council doesn't write the park rules.
Right, but it's just for even our, just for my understanding of, you know, how we can even advocate for change. I have to know, kind of just understand what the rules are.
Thank you. So everyone, uh Max just added his email. And dude at council dot N Y C dot G O V. Um so the meeting is end here. Um I know like some people have other stuff after this. So uh thank you very much for your time. And yeah, uh I'm, I'm gonna just keep the chat so that like Arian has his email, uh just to make sure. And also, Washington Square Conservancy put the email as well. Uh grace at washington S Q park dot org.
Um I did also share a link. Um we've just been asking for a better resource than three-one-one to be reporting the cannabis tables to, um and there is an Office of Cannabis Management being run by the state. Um and they have a reporting tool, so I just included the link to that as well. We've just been told that's more effective at this point than three-one-one.
It is, especially considering that they have now expanded the jurisdiction of the O C M from what used to be only the licensed premises. So ironically, they couldn't enforce against all the unlicensed premises. That's a positive. Um but anyway, uh uh next, that's for next time. I am late for the next one, so I'm gonna say thank you and, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, so did everyone take the email?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Actually, we're gonna continue this. Okay, have a good one, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming and hearing us out.